All right, well, let us call the June seventeenth Board of Education meeting to order. And a roll call, please, Mrs. Haas.
Mr. Nicrom.
Here.
Mr. Paul.
Here.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Here.
Mrs. Bookta.
Here.
Mr. Chaney.
Here. Please stand with me as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its liberal, religious stance, one nation, under God, indivisible,天地，and justice for all.
Each meeting, we begin with the School District of Fort Atkinson's mission statement, because that's why we're here and that's why we're doing this. The School District of Fort Atkinson is committed to delivering the quality opportunities and services each student needs to achieve his or her academic and personal potential. Now, we will move to comments from the audience. Please keep them to three minutes. Go ahead and stand at the podium if you have comments to be made. Keep them three minutes or under, and remember to give us your name, address. Name and address. All right. Were there any submitted online, Dr. Abbott?
There were not.
Moving forward to the consent agenda, Dr. Abbott.
Sure, as we know, Robert's Rules provides for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Documentation concerning these items have been provided to all board members in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review and will become part of the permanent record. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. This evening's consent agenda items, item A, minutes from the May twenty, twenty twenty-one regular meeting, item B, early graduation requests, item C, personnel requests, including the following, approve the following appointments, Jordan Bigner, one point oh grade three teacher at Purdy Elementary School, Diana Barber, one point oh alternative education teacher at Fort Atkinson Middle School, Angelo Ferris, one point oh FTE grade seven ELA teacher at Fort Atkinson Middle School, Clayton Iverson, one point oh FTE business education teacher at Fort Atkinson High School, Taylor Zarninsky, one point oh grade six through eight physical education health teacher at Fort Atkinson Middle School, Julie Lewis, one point oh FTE cross categorical teacher at Fort Atkinson Middle School, Samuel Mas, one point oh English teacher at Fort Atkinson High School, Shelley Malterer, one point oh math teacher interventionist at Fort Atkinson Middle School, Angela Salamoni, one point oh FTE district wide special education pupil services coordinator, Annie Sikowitz, one point oh FTE grade six ELA teacher at Fort Atkinson Middle School, Nikita Scaire, one point oh FTE grade four teacher at Purdy Elementary, and Sidney Young, one point oh FTE school counselor at Berry Elementary. Also, the following transfer requests, Stephanie Belzer from one point oh FTE behavior interventionist at Luther and Rockwell to one point oh FTE elementary social worker, Carrie Hill from one point oh FTE grade three teacher at Purdy Elementary to one point oh FTE grade two teacher at Purdy Elementary, Brody Kozak from one point oh FTE grade six English teacher at Fort Atkinson Middle School to one point oh FTE literacy interventionist at Fort Atkinson Middle School, Amber Lemke from one point oh FTE grade three teacher at Rockwell Elementary to one point oh FTE elementary literacy coach and interventionist, Jenny Maras from one point oh FTE EL teacher at Purdy Elementary to one point oh FTE grade two teacher at Purdy Elementary, Devin Ponenski, one point oh, from one point oh grade one teacher at Luther Elementary to one point oh FTE grade three teacher at Rockwell Elementary, Wendy Schmidt from one point oh FTE elementary reading interventionist to one point oh FTE reading interventionist at Luther Elementary, and Heather Walters from one point oh FTE grade one teacher at Luther Elementary to one point oh FTE grade three teacher at Rockwell Elementary. Also, the following resignation request from Tiffany Pierce, be it further resolved, the Board of Education thanked Tiffany Pierce for her three years of service and dedication to the students and community. Then, item D, addendum to the school nursing services contract, item E, budget transfer requests, and item F, payment of district bills and the treasurer's report.
Nice job, Dr. Abbott, thank you very much. Is there any discussion among the board about the consent agenda? I know there's a lot of requests for transfers and whatnot. Does anyone have any questions? We don't want to gloss over anything.
I don't have any.
All right, seeing no discussion, then we can go ahead and entertain the, the resolution.
I move to pass the consent agenda as written.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Paul, second by Mr. Nicrom, and a roll call, please, Mrs. Haas.
Mr. Paul.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta.
Yes.
Mr. Chaney.
Yes.
Mr. Nicrom.
Yes. And that passes. Moving forward to instruction, I believe we have some textbook adoptions.
Yeah, so this is a second read, it was, they were first read last month. We have two, the first is the Illustrated of Mathematics version three point one four one five, that would be used in grades six, seven, and eight, obviously at our middle school, and then also U.S. History, American Stories, to be used in grade seven and Social Studies. And again, these have been on the table for a month, materials were available for view, and this is the second read.
Did we have any questions about the textbooks that were available for us to check out, or did we hear anything that we needed to discuss?
Nope.
All right, seeing none, then we can go ahead and entertain the motion.
Be resolved that the following textbooks be removed from the table as written below.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Nicrom, a second by Mr. Paul, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? All right, now we have the motion to adopt them officially.
Be resolved that the following textbooks be adopted for use in the School District of Fort Atkinson.
I'll second.
A motion by Mrs. Bookta, and a second by Mrs. Reynolds, and a roll call, please, Mrs. Haas.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta.
Yes.
Mr. Nicrom.
Yes.
Mr. Paul.
Yes.
Mr. Chaney.
Yes. And that passes, and we've got new texts for our students, fantastic. Moving forward, we're going to now discuss the preliminary budget. There was a twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two preliminary budget, there was a very well-done presentation via Loom, and that's included in, was included in PAC, but it's also included for the public online. It's pretty succinct, it's about fourteen minutes, I think. Did we have any questions for Mr. Demraff, any discussion, any clarification?
The related materials that are available online, as well as the video, is certainly very helpful.
Yes.
I think it's, it's really nice for people to be able to go back and, and look at things again, or see what questions they might have. As Mr. Chaney mentioned, Mr. Demraff is here, should he have any questions for him?
I just think it was a really well-done presentation, as typical, but it, it really brought home in a very digestible way how our budget works, and how we can really look at how it's broken up, and you can see what we spend money on, and I think it made me, again, I've probably said this more than, more than I should, but made me proud of our fiduciary responsibility as a district, and it also, one of the things that I wanted to highlight, and I've highlighted it before, is that we're seeing an increase in the draw of voucher-funded schools through our, our budget. It's increased since I've been on the board, I think, from in the tens of thousands to almost a million. So, that is money that we have to, we pass on, and the tax pay is, I think it's important for people who are fastidious about our budget, really take a minute, watch, or take fifteen, fourteen minutes and watch that video, and then try to digest all of the things that it's giving us, but most specifically, this kind of new structure of, of, you know, the draw of voucher schools on our, specifically our budget, which we're responsible for.
If I, I might also direct people, the, the new biennial budget process in Madison continues as we speak, and is something that we definitely want to be paying attention to, as Mr. Demraff notes in his presentation. Perhaps the biggest question mark lingering over all public schools at this point is, is what if any increase there will be from the state, and in what form that might be. So, stay tuned, and participate as, as you're asked through your professional organizations as well.
I, I think the video is very, it's good at telling us that, how we're operating with pretty much the assumption that we're not going to necessarily have any funds, and even that, we're, or any additional, even that, we're not, we're not necessarily running too far into the red. I mean, we're still considering the size of the organization, and the amount of things that we've had to pivot to do in the last, you know, twenty-four months. It, it does make me feel like we've got a really good handle on our finances, and they're, and they're explained in a digestible way, so people who want to know more and feel like they're better informed, just watch the, the video, it's, it really is well-done, and it's, it's very easy to, to grasp. So, I guess, is there any further conversation? I don't know. All right, well, seeing none, then we can go ahead and move forward to part B, which is the interfund payment from the general fund to the post-employment benefits trust.
As the board's aware, this is a procedural shift by statute and by board policy to move funds from one place to another so that they can be used for their intended purpose. Again, Mr. Demraff is here, should he have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Demraff? Getting off easy tonight, Jason. Appreciate you being here, though, either way. Well, then, if we have no further discussion, then we can go ahead and entertain the motion there. You can read it as written.
Has enough fun.
Well, yeah, no, read it, read it the whole way, then.
I'll just read it. Be resolved that a payment in the amount of one hundred and five percent of the sum of the pay-as-you-go post-employment health insurance benefits, and the implicit rate subsidy estimated to be seven hundred ninety-eight thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars, be made from the general fund, Fund Ten, to the post-employment benefits trust, Fund Seventy-three, by July thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and be it further resolved that on or before July thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, a payment equal to the sum of the pay-as-you-go post-employment health insurance benefits, and the implicit rate subsidy estimated to be seven hundred fifty-six thousand three hundred ninety dollars, be made from Fund Seventy-three to Fund Ten to reimburse Fund Ten for the post-employment benefits paid, it paid during the twenty twenty, twenty-one fiscal year.
I'll second. And you read that so well.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, nice job.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Paul, second by Mrs. Reynolds, and a roll call, please, Mrs. Haas.
Mrs. Bookta.
Yes.
Mr. Nicrom.
Yes.
Mr. Paul.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Chaney.
Yes, and that passes. Money goes where it belongs. Moving on to item C, is the school operations update?
Yes, so, I'm going to do that from, from this seat this evening. I think we have three different topics, I would encourage the board to make considerations of, one related to face coverings, the other related to contact tracing, and then finally is related to facilities use. I think, as, as everyone is aware, things have changed pretty dramatically over the past several weeks, particularly in the past month, if not the couple of weeks just preceding this. Local and county and regional data, I think, provides us the ability, and my suggestion would be that we discontinue the requirement of face coverings, and making them optional for all groups on and in district property. And then, we would also encourage you to reiterate, or to ask those who are unvaccinated to, to, we'd encourage them to continue wearing a face covering while they're on school property. And then, we would also ask that face coverings be required for all groups on school buses, or in other vehicles that are used for school district activities, for when there is more than one individual present. The CDC is still making the suggestion for school buses, it's given proximity spacing, airflow, and those types of things. And then, with summer school, we do have a few activities that are using district vans, or in some cases, other vehicles. One comes to mind canoeing and kayaking, for instance, where, at least to get us into summer school, you know, we have another meeting in July, if the board wanted to consider something else, that would be similar to what all of the other area school districts have been doing as well. So, again, our suggestion would be making face coverings optional for all groups, encouraging those who are unvaccinated to continue wearing a face covering, and then also requiring, or continuing to require face coverings for school buses or other vehicles used for district activities. We would also ask that the board consider discontinuing district staff being used for contact tracing, or determining quarantine status of students and staff. This has been adopted by many, if not all, but many certainly of area school districts. We have data to show that, that this would be a sensible way to move forward at this point, it's something that, if you wanted to resume, should dynamics change at some point, you certainly could, but again, to discontinue our in-district staff contact tracing or determining quarantine status. And then, finally, we believe the time has come to revert to pre-COVID facilities use operations, so we would like to walk back the extra cleaning, or the extra fees, the other steps that were put in place last July. And, I guess, in all, especially with summer school starting on Monday, we really have a couple of months now to, to try some things out, and see how they go, and we have lots of kids and staff in and out of buildings, and different types of activities and classes, and I think this will really help us better understand and see what fall could look like for us, as things continue in, in a positive direction, we hope. So, we do have some draft resolutions there for you to consider, you certainly don't need to use them as written, but again, those are the three areas we'd like you to consider this evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Abbott. Board? I mean, I guess I can start off by saying that, like, that we, there is, CDC still recommends things being as they were, however, those studies and the CDC also, and our epidemiologists locally, often refers to your conditions locally are gonna dictate your response, so you cater your response to your, to your community locally, and although I've received some flack, I, I am in favor of getting rid of masks for now. I do think that we have seen that they do help mitigate airborne disease transmission, and if we need to do it again, we pivot, we go right back to, man, I said it twice tonight, pivot. We go right back to the strategies that we, that we know worked, because we did, we were able to work it, you know, as best we could during that period, and I think we did a good job of that, and I think if we're given that situation again, I think we'll only do better, but I do think that we need to consider taking these masks off for the appropriate places. I, I do agree with the close proximity and air, you know, like on an airplane, for example, or a bus, or a train, I probably will still wear a mask, and I think that's a wise choice for us, so. And then, as far as the rest, I've, I've felt like contact tracing was one of the most egregious burdens that a district had to be responsible for, we had a bunch of people who specialize in education, and, and fortifying kids' lives, and they were, they were trying to have some pretty difficult conversations with parents and stuff, I, so I'm, I'm in favor of, of that, and I, as far as facility uses concerned, I also have, feel that we need to make a change in how we have handled that, I think we've heard enough from the community, and I think the community has worked with us in all of these instances in such a way that it's, it's time we show that we're, you know, we're willing to follow the science, and to follow the local data, and make choices based on that, not based on how we feel. That's just my two cents.
I tend to agree with what Mark just said, but I just want to clarify, I guess, clarification, when we do say all groups, that's not outside groups, that's staff, teachers. No, that would be all individuals. Everybody. Yes. Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of continuing to roll stuff back here, without regurgitating what Mark said, obviously, we keep our eye on things, but I'm, I'm in favor of the resolutions as written.
Yeah, when, when looking at these things, as the, the counting numbers as of this afternoon were, I think, less than one case per fourteen days, or something like that, I certainly think that warrants pulling, you know, taking our first leap towards normalcy of whatever that may look like beyond, beyond this here, so I, I think it's certainly applicable if, if that's what we're going towards, is wearing face masks on, on buses and things like that, that, that seems reasonable to me, and that's, the way I understand it, is about the only time people are gonna be wearing masks now at, at school functions, so I think that's great, I think that's gonna be a big step forward for us. As far as contact tracing, absolutely, 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 let's get people that are trained on education, back on education again, and get the ball around on that. Facilities usage, I absolutely agree, this is, this is a giant step for us here, so I'm, I'm happy to be here on this day.
I think one, one just point to make is that people certainly should feel comfortable to continue to wear a face covering if they, whether it's students or staff or others, and I was just at the grocery store an hour ago, and it was a mix of both, and I, we definitely want to create space for, for students and staff and families to choose the mitigation strategies they feel are appropriate for them at this point in time, and I guess, in summary, I think we're feeling like that individual choice at, at this time makes the most sense, as opposed to unilateral.
That, that's actually a really good point, I intended to say that, so thank you for, thank you for bringing that up, but yeah, we don't want to discourage people from feeling, you know, if they want to wear a mask, they should feel comfortable doing that, we should foster that, that atmosphere. I personally will, probably with some of my students, when we begin in the winter, or in the fall, so. Is there any further discussion, does anyone else have anything they'd like to say, or?
Um, I, go ahead, which one?
You guys both talk at the same time, we'll see who finishes first.
I too agree with the resolution, also with the understanding that at this point, we all have choices, we all have opportunities, nothing is, we all can get the vaccine or not get the vaccine, so I think, with that being said, given the choice to wear masks and not wears masks, I think is a fair, is fair for everyone, in all parts, so.
Ooh, my turn. I, yeah, I'm in agreement with all of it, you know, contract tracing, all of that, my only thing is the face coverings required on school buses and vans and that. If we're gonna be going back to, you know, pre-COVID type of things for the facilities use and stuff like that, I would, I would be okay with it being optional for that as well. Because, I mean, everywhere else, they can be, you know, twenty kids in a school, in a classroom, and then, you know, four people on a van, I just, to me, that doesn't sit right.
No, I, I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
Without speaking for admin, or the district, really, but my guess is that's because through the unnecessary evil, or the necessary evil of contact tracing, that that's one area where we saw people, because we know it's been mostly among youth, it's been sports-related, and that's like the main place that they're, you know, kind of congregated in a, other than, you know, the huddle and football and things like that, but in a bus, you're, you know, you are kind of like in a play, in a very confined space, and that's where we've seen the, you know, a, a number, a number of our cases pop up, I guess you can't say that they happened on the bus, you're right.
Right, I understand that, but as soon as they get off the bus, they're gonna take their face masks off, and they're all gonna be congregating.
But they're, but they're in, I guess the idea is they're in moving air, that's actually moving it, like, all around, as opposed to just moving kind of through a wind tunnel. I, I don't necessarily disagree with you, I just know that I've heard this conversation come up in another district, and that was kind of what they had discussed, I don't remember what they ended up voting on, but I do remember that was the discussion, so. Is that some, somewhat behind?
I mean, virtually all other school districts have this provision left in through summer, just as a sort of stepping into opening things back up, and you're obviously welcome to do whatever it is that you'd like. In the past, you've asked for information as to what other districts or what, what guidance is, and this is what, what fits that bill, the guidance is, is, is this, and this is what other area districts are doing, and you're certainly, you're welcome to take or leave it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we are, we are, we are able to, to change the, the motion if, if needed, I personally don't feel the need to, but if, if we wanted to, I'm sure we.
I guess I'm kind of, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of halfway with you on that one, I feel like, kind of baby steps, maybe we want to leave that as it is, but I'm curious, not only to see what other districts are doing, but like airlines, you know, as we go towards fall, if we see all the airlines finally get rid of their masks, I think that's like a really good sign that we don't have to worry about it, I mean, the one spot that I would be concerned of, if there were to be people transferring stuff, is in that enclosed bus, but, you know, I think with summer, we're not, there's not a ton of people getting on buses for us over the summer, right?
Like two trips, right?
There's not an awful lot of bus transportation, we do have vehicle transportation, and I think that's a piece of it, you know, if we have, you know, five kids in a station wagon, we're going on a kayaking trip, that's a little different than having ten kids on a sixty-two passenger bus, so I think, you know, that's, that's a piece of, a piece of trying to stop things down. But again, you certainly are welcome to do away with that, if you'd like as well.
I mean, it, to me, it just seems like if we're making everything else optional for wearing face masks, to me, that seems like we should do that on, on there too, especially because there's not that much for busing going on, it's mainly, you know, the smaller vehicles doing the, like, the camps and, you know, little trips and that type of thing.
I think I, I think upon reflection, I would support Amy and, I think, the verbiage, and, and instead of saying required.
and, instead of saying required, having it optional because it would be consistent, especially with the students.
Yeah, cause if they want to.
Kids are gonna go on their own personal vehicle without a mask in some situations. They're not gonna necessarily, like, maybe they'll forget, or what if they don't have one? Of course, we could provide it at the same rate, but I think the idea of being accountable for ourselves.
Yeah, yeah.
While being cognizant of others, I think is a.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think any of this is crazy, you know, I just, I think, you know, the, the point of, of the, probably the resolution was just to remain consistent with other districts so that we could remain consistent with our, other districts. But that, we're not beholden to, you know, be the same as every other district, so. And, and, you know, that's why we have a board, so that we can have this discussion. So we have two, two people who feel like we should maybe do with the, uh, face coverings are optional on buses and other vehicles used for school district activities even when that one individual is present, more than one individual's present.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. Maybe we just put buses and other vehicles into the first resolution and strike the third one, so they'll be optional.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also comfortable with that as well. I guess I didn't have much thought into where this is going before the meetings. That's obviously why we have these meetings. Another thing is, I'm thinking through this, you know, it could very well cause this further distraction of, you know, like, like we don't have this consistency of wearing masks going forward, and all of a sudden like, oh, we're going somewhere today, we need a mask now that, you know, now we have some disruption in the day.
Yeah, no, I.
Of already a shortened summer school day. So, yeah, I, I can't imagine, you know, an elementary school kid remembering a face mask on a particular, particular day if they're taking a, you know, when they're not usually wearing that. So I, I think that makes sense, I'm good with that as well.
So what I'm hearing is that we kind of want, want to do optional for that third be it further resolved.
Yes.
Basically, the reason why we're doing this is not because we disagree with the, the resolution itself, but more consistency as a district. And just to maybe, maybe make things a little bit easier for organization and things. But, but also at the same time, we could be taking a risk. So I just kind of want to say that, that we are, we are kind of going against some of the other districts' advice, but.
And that's okay.
Yes, and I was gonna say, but that's okay, we're not beholden to other districts, so I, but I feel like, you know, it should be put in the record that, you know, that's, that we're doing that. So I'm okay with that, we can, we can then entertain the motion unless there's further discussion. The first two are as written, and then the third one would be be it further resolved that face coverings be optional.
I think they should be read, Mr. Chaney, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, so you'd like.
I think the resolution needs to be read in total. And perhaps an edit for the third would be to strike required and insert optional and place a period after the word activities.
Okay.
Which I think would suffice.
Okay.
At least that would be a suggestion of an edit.
No, that's, that's perfect, that's what we want to do. Yeah, so we need to make sure they're read, so.
I can read it. Okay, be resolved that, that face coverings be made optional for all groups when on school district property, oh, excuse me, when on school district of Fort Atkinson property, and be it further resolved that unvaccinated individuals be highly encouraged to wear face coverings when on school district of Fort Atkinson property. And be it further resolved that face cover, face coverings be made optional for all groups when on school buses or in other vehicles used for school district activities.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Paul, a second by Mrs. Reynolds, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, and the motion passes. Moving forward to the resolution on contact tracing.
Be it further resolved that the school district of Fort Atkinson will no longer conduct contact tracing or determine the quarantine status of students or staff.
I'll second. Motion by Mrs. Reynolds, a second by Mr. Nicrom, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, and that passes. The last we have is the facilities use.
Be it resolved that the school district of Fort Atkinson eliminate any COVID-19 special requirements for facilities use and operate the use of district facilities in accordance with the Board of Education Policy 7510.
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Bookta, a second by Mr. Paul, and a rule call, please, Mrs. Haas.
Mr. Nicrom?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Chaney?
Yes, that passes.
Oh, now you go up.
Now Dr. Abbott is going to regale us with his strategic plan update.
Well, as promised, in June, we're excited to take the next step forward and anticipate you know, packaging things together for the board and community to look at a comprehensive.
To take a look at the suggested strategic plan in August with all of its components assembled. So as, as the board and the community are aware, we've been working through a process to get us here in June, which is where we would like to be talking, built upon the foundational pieces we, we've talked about over the past months, those guiding principles and those district beliefs, and taking some time to develop and consider a vision statement and perhaps a new visions, or mission statement rather, for the school district moving forward. So without spending a lot of time here, I think it's important though to just take a little bit of a step back and talk about what are vision statements, what are mission statements, and perhaps how are they different? When we think of vision statements, we're thinking of, of things that are timeless, things that offer the question why, and where is it we're going someday? So sort of the giant umbrella to which we aspire. So where is it that we want to go someday? And then the mission statement is more about the what and the how. What are the things that we're doing each and every day to work toward that vision? So, again, we're looking at vision statements being timeless, we're asking for mission statements that are concise, memorable, and powerful. Sometimes fewer words are better in, in our efforts to be inclusive, and when things get longer, we end up being less inclusive. So I think the board is well aware that at this point, we do not have a current vision statement for the district. This would be new for us. But again, like, what's the big idea? What are the, the overarching goal of the district? Where is it that we want to be someday? And then of course, our current mission statement, which is read at the beginning of every board meeting, "The school district of Fort Atkinson is committed to delivering the quality opportunities and services each student needs to achieve his or her academic and personal potential." So as the board has heard, we've had, well, hundreds and hundreds of responses to a few different input surveys and different opportunities for our staff and community to participate through this process. Most recently, as we've been looking at vision and mission, we had over 300 responses from a community survey. We were doing video interviews of students and staff and community members, there was a school board survey, the administrators were able to weigh in as well. And so it's really been a thorough and rigorous process, and it's, it's really taken us some time to assimilate and really try to digest and winnow down exactly what is it that we might suggest as a vision or a mission to you this evening for you to give some thought to as we package things together in August. And to that end, we put together just a short video, there's, there are longer versions of this, trust me, and in, in some of the edits, we'll put the longer version out at some point. It's really exciting to see, without any prompting whatsoever, one posed a simple question, what we heard back from students, what we heard back from staff, and what we heard back from some of our community members.
I want to be a mechanical engineer.
I want to be a veterinarian when I grow up.
A famous musician.
When I grow up, I want to be a music teacher.
I want to be a professional sports player.
A first grade teacher.
Um, my lifelong dream is to become a physical therapist.
So I want to become an auto detailer and own my own detailing business.
I want to be when I grow up is a police officer.
So after high school, I plan on enlisting and going to basic training in the Army National Guard.
I want to be a teacher when I grow up.
I will go to that hospital.
An artist or a famous, um, baseball player.
That we have invested in character-filled, competent, contributing members of our society that we've built the leaders of tomorrow who want to serve in entrepreneurial roles, who want to serve for their companies, who want to serve in building their communities because they have been invested in themselves and they want to give back to their communities.
Uh, in the future, I hope that when people talk about Fort Schools, they say that we had a lot of opportunities for students to grow and achieve in more ways than just their academics, but the sports teams that we offer, the theater, the music, and all the different pieces that make a well-rounded person.
I hope that they will say that their kids went to schools that helped them become amazing individuals. I hope that in, in learning all of that, they have had a lot of fun, they've learned a lot of new skills, and they are now ready to go out in the world and be great learners and workers.
I'm hoping people say, you know, it's a great academic, great extracurricular as far as sports and the music program. That just really gives kids a lot of different opportunities that may not fit totally academically, but there's something for them to do at that school, maybe as a theater department or show choir, or being a part of an active sports team.
And that I hope they will say in the future is about our inclusivity. I really want us to be known for the fact that we love all of our students, all ability levels, everything, and that all of our students felt welcome and loved in our school.
I hope that people speak of Fort Schools in the future as a community that is definitely one team as we all move forward to help give our kids the best opportunity for success.
Which I think gives us a nice sort of summary of all of the input and all of the pieces that we've been working on, looking back at those guiding principles, looking back at those beliefs. I think we're gonna play again. What we would suggest the board consider is a vision or our someday being achieving distinction in all we do. That's our someday. And we'd suggest for your consideration, a mission or the day-to-day work that we're doing, being cultivate an inclusive, high-performing culture of growth and community. And as you can imagine, I think I lost my clickability. Words really do matter, clearly. And in one of the things that this vision does is it allows for all groups to be part of achieving distinction. It applies to staff, it applies to students, it applies to families, it applies to our community, it applies to where it is that we want to go someday. As we continue to, to craft and develop and evolve our school district and grow our offerings and what it is and who it is, and to whom we are, this is our vision, to achieve distinction, to achieve excellence in everything that we do. And then with the mission, cultivate an inclusive, high-performing culture of growth and community. And again, we're opting or suggesting very few words. And just to take one as an example, the word community encompasses everyone. It's the school community, it's the district community, it's the Fort Atkinson community, it's our county community and on. When we talk about students and citizenship, it's covered there. And again, this, I think, really encompasses all that we've been getting back from all of that feedback. When you think back to that video, all of those comments live here under our vision and mission. So one of the things that we've been talking about for quite some time is, is moving to that of being a more results-driven district, being more transparent about what is it that we're working on and are we making progress towards our vision or towards that mission that we're going to put forward as part of this new strategic plan. And what we would propose, without giving you any concrete goals, clearly, that would be coming in August, is, is keeping people very close to our day-to-day or our mission. So we'd be looking at a goal or statement for each of these areas, this, the area of high performance, of culture of growth, of community of distinction. And when you take just those three pieces out, I mean, you're left with four words in your mission, two of them are connecting words. It really keeps that mission in front of everyone and everything that we're doing. So again, what we'd be looking at is a goal that's easy for the community to understand, that's rigorous yet attainable, but is something that the community knows that we're working on. And underneath that then, we would be looking at tactics, or perhaps those would be our school improvement plans, or those are, are the actual nuts and bolts plans of what it is that we're doing to work towards achieving that goal. So again, we'd be looking at a goal or, or goals perhaps, but an overarching goal in the areas of high performance, in that culture of growth, and in that community of distinction, under which then would be our tactics, or what are the things that we're working on in a very deliberate manner and showing that we're making and finding results, making growth, or we're not, and that we need to, to move a different direction in order for us to work closer to that, that goal. So just, and these are very much just examples, but for instance, in high performance, a strategy might be that all school report cards are exceeding expectations within a certain amount of time, with three years or whatever the case might be. And then the tactics then would be the plans, what's going on at the district level, but then in each of our buildings in order to make that goal attainable? And then how is it that we report back to the board and the community about what's working? Or what are the things that we need to shift gears and look at a little bit differently? And then similarly, for cultural growth and that area of community distinction as well. One of the things that we like about this, this element of community distinction is it gives a place for everyone to be. This isn't simply about a standardized test score, it's about the entire comprehensive school system that we take pride in. And how is it that we find room for all of our teachers and all of our staff and students to excel and find a place of distinction as they too continue to improve their skills and what they do moving forward? So what we would suggest is if you would, certainly take any feedback that you have on our, our suggestion of vision or mission. But our hope is then to pull all of these pieces together for you in your August meeting. We have data retreats and other activities going on between now and the August meeting to take a look at learning data and other student data from the past year. That we'll be able to synthesize and put together in formulating those goals heading into year one of the new strategic plan. So this package would come together for you for your consideration in August, and we'd be able to be much more clear and comprehensive of what, what those goals might be moving forward. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I don't have any questions, I just would like to say that I've been here now for three, I guess theoretically, three strategic plans, the, the one that was finishing up when I just came onto the board, the one that we kind of authored with previous, and then this one. And I feel like we have, that you and your staff, you and your administration have really kind of distilled the giant global stuff that we had in our last strategic plan, which is great, but it wasn't tangible enough for like me necessarily to even understand some of those things. And the very rigorous checklist-oriented strategic plan that we used to have, which was, you know, great for holding accountability and for measuring and for real-time progress kind of measuring. But I think this, I look forward to just seeing those examples and that, the, the examples and strategy, strategies and tactics, those things make sense to me, I don't have to really. and strategies and tactics, those things make sense to me, I don't have to really wrestle with the, what, you know, what those things, what those examples mean, and I'm excited to, like, be a part of that and have that to push out to the community and have that be like, well, what are you doing? Well, these are the things that we're doing, and these are our goals, and I think that, you know, it makes me excited because I think we've got the team to do it, so. That wasn't a question.
And can I add, not only what Mark said, what I love about is you can see the connecting dots between everything that we're doing, right? Like, the connection with the vision, the mission, and also the results that are afterwards. So I'm excited to see where this goes, I love this kind of stuff, and I think it provides, you know, kind of sets us up where we're going here. So I love it, I think the vision and mission are great, like, every word means something, and I'm excited to see where we go with this.
And that is part of our effort, clearly, is to make it more clear and understandable to the community, you know, for us to be able to talk about what we're working on and for that to have meaning for people, and then underneath that is where the nuts and bolts and all of those detailed plans live. But that's not very community-friendly, and I think this will definitely potentially move us in that direction.
Yeah.
Yeah. I love it, I love, I love all your presentations to us.
Thank you.
They're so well-done, you can tell that there's so much, you know, effort, so much meaning, so much thought that goes behind every single thing, that nobody's getting left out, nothing is getting left out, you've clearly thought of so much more than, you know, like, other mission, vision, values, and all of those things have, you know, we've seen in the past, you've clearly, like, gone way above that, and it, to me, it's awesome, it's amazing.
Well, thank you, and that certainly should be shared among many, many different people. What I would say, though, is I think our task has been more about organizing other people's ideas. And when you look back at the surveys or the different opportunities people had to engage with this work, that's really what we've been doing, and whoever used the word distilled, I mean, that's really what we've been doing, is taking what we've gotten from other people. It's been very little directly from us as much as it's been, how is it that you get that to a point that we're trying to offer you this evening, or to give some thought to when we package it together? So again, building on those foundational pieces of guiding principles and beliefs, and then moving to our mission, our day-to-day, our vision, our someday, and then what are the goals that we're working on long-term, short-term, to each of those elements of the mission statement?
Yeah, seeing that word cloud was pretty encouraging, to see, like...
Yeah, we'll have to put the longer version out because there's a lot of...
I've always thought those were interesting word clouds.
It was really, when we were in the thick of this, it was really rewarding to just look at what spontaneously, especially like kids and staff, but even our community members, like, it was just very spontaneous and certainly no prompting. So, I mean, those are just first reactions from people, which was really affirming in the work, for sure.
It's a good idea.
That's Marissa.
Yeah, such an email already.
Does anybody else have, thank you, Dr. Abbott, does anyone have any further questions for Dr. Abbott? I want him to stand for too long. Any further discussion from anyone about the strategic plan update?
Thank you for the fantastic presentation, those who were involved. Moving forward, we have WASB, CISA reports, legislative advocacy, and items for future board meetings. I don't have anything personally for WASB, CISA reports, we just have the budget of stuff that we've been tracking, and I believe some of us are registered again for another one of the equity trainings in June. I still highly encourage anybody interested in any of those WASB offerings to let us know, or let Dr. Abbott or Mrs. Haas know. Now that they're not mandate, most, some of them are not mandatory that you be there in person, they're a lot more, I think, useful for us as board members who are busy and have children and games and families and things. So where they used to be something I kind of didn't even regard because I didn't have the time, now I'm starting to, like, look at them more, I find myself more engaged in, for sure.
And we've definitely provided that feedback to those organizations as well.
Oh, good.
I think they're seeing that.
Oh, good, yeah, that's great. It was no fun to, like, you know, have a full day of work and then have to go and, you know, sit through a training and try to be really, like, engaged and not be like, I gotta...
They're not always the most dynamic.
Well, yeah, yeah, that's true. But that aside, it's hard to bring my own self to be engaged. So with nothing else, and if anyone else has anything about CISA or legislative advocacy...
No, just keep your eyes on the budget process in Madison, I think that's what all of our organizations are rallying around right now, so, somewhat all-consuming.
So then we move to the items for future board meetings, it looks like we're going to...
Yeah, so we'll be looking at approval of a preliminary budget, of course, that'll be good us on the road to our annual meeting coming in August. At some point this summer, we'll have results on the advanced placement exam. With everything else, those results are not where they typically would be on the calendar, so as soon as those are available, Mr. Halverson will put together a presentation for you. We'll be approving student handbooks in, at your next meeting as well, and perhaps we'll talk about school opening, but I'm thinking that we'll probably give some pause there if we're able to, based on your actions this evening, and unless things really go sideways, I think it will be great for us to wait another six weeks or so and just really see where we're at and not expand or extend a lot of our or the community's energy in a direction that maybe isn't going to be necessary or worthwhile. So if it's all right with you, unless something really comes up, I think we'll take that off the agenda and then sort of see where we're at.
I think that's wise, I think everybody could use this summer to just kind of breathe...
Yeah, and then if we do have choices to make, or some decisions to make, I mean, we could look at a special meeting at the end of July or somewhere that's before that August meeting, but your July meeting happens quite rapidly now, it's early in the month, as is this, so there aren't very many days in between.
All right, well, thank you very much, Dr. Abbott, we can go ahead and move forward to everyone's favorite motion, the adjournment.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Reynolds, second by Mr. Nickram, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And we are out here at 7:24 PM. Thank you very much for those of you who attended, try to stay dry.